Good morning. May we start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, I assume?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I want, I'd like everybody to know that this is not a male commission, but the two women are not here today. They, hopefully Sandy may still show. Donna's out of town, which is very rare. Okay, um, TV coverage announcement.
Uh, thank you. Um, Monsulcal Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB TV, channel twenty at nine AM in the south coast, Longfoke, Saniness Valley, Samaria, and Arca areas. Rebroadcasting Monsulcal Planning Commissions are on Fridays at five PM on CSB TV, channel twenty. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and will be available for download in a day or two. Shall I move on to roll call?
Yes, please.
All right, Commissioner Kupiak.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
And Chair Poliche.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Sinhour is absent today, and, but we are still hoping that Commissioner Stoll will join us.
Okay. So agenda status report.
Correct. Start this over again. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Just a quick aside before we get into the agenda status report. Typically, we do selections of the Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, et cetera, today. However, due to Commissioner Sinhour being out of the country, we've deferred that to our next meeting in February. So in case anybody here or at home was anxiously waiting for that selection to occur, it'll happen next month. So then moving on to the agenda status report, we have three items on our agenda today. The first item is to a coastal development permit to allow for demolition of an existing garage and other development. The other one is a recorded map modification, and then the last one is exterior alterations of a structure on Periwinkle Lane. As you may be aware, late in the day yesterday, we did receive a request from the applicant on the last item, number three, to continue that item to February 21st. My recommendation is that we take that item first on the agenda, address the continuance, and then we can move into the other agenda items.
Sounds good.
And then I can move to the projection report, Mr. Chair, if you would like.
Please.
So our next scheduled hearing, as I indicated a few minutes ago, is on February 21st. Depending on the results of our action on the continuance, we will have four items on that day. Well, sorry, one item. I got you. Which would be the item number three today, and as we had brief conversation earlier, we'll be reaching out to the Public Works Department Flood Control to see if we can get representatives from Flood Control to provide a presentation to the Planning Commission on that date. Our next hearing after that would be on April, and as of now, there are no I'll take it back, March. I'm already trying to get through the year. So in February, we'll have the continuance presentation by Flood Control. March, as of right now, there is one item projected, which is additions to residents. And then in April, we don't have anything projected for April yet. So that concludes the projection report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Public comments?
I haven't received any physical speaker slips. If anyone online would like to speak on anything on today's agenda, raise your hand and I'll call on you. Not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, moving on to informational reports, planning commissioners. Anyone?
Yeah, I have. But at least for the, for the item that's about to be bumped to the next meeting, I did have two conversations regarding that.
Is that, that's not the same thing?
So we can, when we take on the continuance request, we can, we can do that.
I'm sorry, and I have nothing.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Neither I, so let's move on. I guess we can move to the, to the minutes of last December 20th, and at that meeting, we had three of us here. So I don't have any changes I want to make, do you?
No.
So.
I would move that we accept the minutes of that December meeting.
Okay. Got a second? Can't second.
I think that you probably should second.
Yeah, I'm gonna second. Okay, I second. And?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With one abstention? Okay, great.
Okay. So moving back to our agenda, let's see, we have directors here, yes. I can't miss your beautiful white jacket. Charming outfit, go ahead. That's kind of sexist, I'll stop.
Happy New Year, Happy New Year.
I'll behave myself here going forward.
It is a nice jacket, thank you.
It is, it just stood out.
I like your, I like your jacket.
He just likes to fade into the background. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Couple things to report this January. The department implemented a program called Solar App in the Building and Safety Division, and this is a program that helps speed up the installation, the approval and installation of rooftop solar. And it's been up since November, and it's been very, very successful so far. We've already had, I think, roughly 110 applications run through that. We usually get about 500 applications a year. And so how this works is the solar provider goes on, fills everything out. As long as they answer all the questions correctly, they're approved, and the county does inspections. So we've done, I think, what was it? Forty-six or forty-seven inspections so far. They call for an inspection and we usually turn it around in a day, and in rare circumstances, it takes two days. So that is, I think, a significant improvement for making sure that solar moves through our system more quickly. You can, if you turn your microphone on.
I will turn my microphone on. This is relative to another item that will be on our agenda in terms of how, how certain items that are minor or considered minor scopes of work, or here in this case, solar, the addition of solar panels on a building. How does that permit process clear the planning department to ensure that the building that this is being put on is not a historic structure?
So Commissioner Kupiak through the chair. Solar panels are exempt from land use permits. Now, we do have a system in Building and Safety where if, there should be a note, actually, if there's a historic structure in our ACELA file, right, if it's been designated as a historic structure, then in that case, some additional review would likely be required. But in general, solar panels are exempt, and they move through the system very quickly, and that's really been encouraged by state law as well.
You know, I understand that that is the case. I think there are other similar issues, you know, I mean, we're about to hear a case that is about roofing repair, which passed through the building department, but unfortunately was never triggered that it was a structure of merit.
Right.
I don't know what we need to do to make sure that this kind of thing gets addressed. I mean, I'm all in favor of solar panels.
Yep.
However, I think even in a review process on a, on a structure of merit, you know, it might get massaged in a way that it would be less intrusive than more intrusive. And I'm concerned that it's just kind of too easy for this to fall through the cracks at the moment.
Commissioner Kupiak through the chair. Now, we're aware of what happened in this instance and have discussed it and are taking steps to make sure that when you have something that's, and is it actually designated as a structure of merit? Okay, I can't, we probably can't talk about it in this, but I understand your point, and we, we understand that we need to make sure that things don't slip through when there's a historic structure.
Yeah, I'm just using that project as an example to talk about a larger kind of endemic problem that exists where, you know, it's easy for some of this stuff to kind of happen. And I don't know how the actual recording of designation would occur.
It's a good question.
If the building department doesn't see it, because the planning department would certainly see it, there's a kind of disconnect there that I'd like to make sure somehow gets addressed.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Kupiak, I'm currently, just as an aside for the director's report, we're working with Building Safety Division to identify projects that would either be no plan check or exemptions. We're working on, you know, process improvements. In that process, we are coordinated with planning to identify some checks and balances for projects that might otherwise be exempt from building permits, but would at least have a cursory view from a planning side to catch these type of things where there may be historical significance or at least a landmark. So that way, there is some early review by planning to make sure that there is no historical significance on the project.
And, and one thing I think we could add is that we can check Solar App. I haven't actually walked through the system, but there may be a question there that asks whether or not it's a historic structure.
Would be terrific if that were added to the checklist.
We can look, we can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more thing for you, if I may say. Do you have something? Maybe not, but anyway, I didn't, I didn't notice your light on. Can't see it anymore. But the fire department, county fire, used to have a little bit more autonomy with, when it comes to their work regarding permits for whatever, whether it's, in my case, is agricultural modular home installations. And, you know, I have an issue where they lack information that's already pre-existing with planning. And I just wondered, is there, do all the departments have the same access, the same information when it comes to a permit? They may look at, for example, there's reports that were put in, comments made, and it appeared that fire did not know about it. So it just seems like over the years, fire used to be really easy to work with, and they're, they're nice people, but they seem like they are not in the flow of information like they were.
Right. So, Mr. Chair, we're all coming up to speed on our new ACELA, right? So this, we're in the second phase now where all the departments are going to be communicating. They should have access to that kind of stuff easily, you know, because all of that is in our system, right? So we're going to be working with them and all the other departments that we do permitting with that have ACELA, and that's environmental health, fire.
Yeah, it's a little sloppy yet, but I, I.
That'll get tightened up.
It is a little early, it's only less than a year.
We're, yeah, well, and we only did phase one, and so now we're starting phase two. And phase two has more to do with the coordination between the departments.
Okay, that's important. That would help the process speed up a little bit. Okay.
I have to tell you, just from practicing architect at this point, it would be nice if plan check comments, when they're being farmed out to an outside agency, actually come back to you through the ACELA process, because they don't. The plant, the remote plan checker sends you a message, and it would be, you know, we're looking, you know, in fact, that happened to me, and because it was an attachment from a remote email not recognized, it sat in my junk mailbox for an extended period of time versus if it would have come through the process of ACELA, we would have known about it immediately.
Yeah, that's good.
A request for phase two.
That's good phase feedback.
Okay, did you have something?
I was curious, Director Plomin, we have, the LA Times had an article recently about the significant decline in new solar installation applications because of the change in, in state subsidies. Are we seeing that in the county, or is there, or is, is the volume of solar continuing to increase?
So Commissioner Miller through the chair. We really haven't seen a decline. I mean, we've had 110 applications in two months. We normally see 500 a year, so I haven't seen that. But I, I did read the same article, and I know that there are issues, and, and there's an appeal to the Public Utilities Commission. Yeah, on those, on that issue.
So can we assume that, can you assume that all solar projects will probably be enhanced by the fact that the small ones get moved quickly?
I would say so, yes. I would say so.
Okay.
I still have more to report.
I wish you would, please.
I wanted to let the commission know that the Strauss Wind Energy Project is actually up and running. That is out in the Lompoc area, and it started up at the end of December. It's now delivering power to the state grid. It has 29 wind turbines, and they are up to 492 feet tall, and they're spread out over 3,000 acres. So this can generate enough power for 40,000 homes. So it's a, it's a pretty, yeah, it's a pretty significant contribution to alternative energy in the state of California, and I think we should be proud of that.
Is there a way to see it?
You can, uh.
This guy knows.
Aaron.
Good morning. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, yes, you can, San Miguelito Road is a public road, and the project is pretty much 100% visible from the end of that road. So if you drive out to Lompoc and then drive south on San Miguelito Canyon Road to the end, you can see the entire project.
Great.
Yeah.
Bravo.
Yeah, it's great. I think NewsHawk is going to be writing an article, and they'll have some photos of the turbines in it. Thank you, Aaron. I couldn't remember the name of the road. I also wanted to just remind you as Commissioners in Monosito, because we've seen a lot of issues there in your community over the years, that we have this quick link on our website. It's called Winter Storm Damage. It's on the right hand, or left-hand side of the website, under the quick links. And that is where people can access information about the work that the department's doing to facilitate communications between state agencies and federal agencies and landowners when they have damage along creeks. And we certainly are, you know, in 2023, we saw a lot of damage, and we recognize that it was a real struggle for a lot of landowners to try and navigate the labyrinth of permitting that's required to do work in some of these areas. And so we have Petra Leva, our supervising planner, is helping to oversee that, and they've been meeting with county departments and the state agencies in advance of this winter to be prepared for issues as they arise throughout the El Nino season. And then I wanted to let you know, the board met on the 9th of January. We talked about the, the criteria that the board's going to be looking at for rezoning properties. Doesn't impact the Monosito community, but it does impact the broader county. And they were outlining the criteria that they wanted to share with the development community about things that they're looking for in projects on sites that they would have to rezone for the housing element. And out of that hearing came a request for a workshop with the board for these property owners, and most of these are in eastern Galita Valley, for these property owners to bring forth their concepts that they would be proposing.
Do you have a date for that?
We don't have a date yet. We don't have a date yet. I will share that date once we have it. But it's sort of their opportunity to share with the board, this is what we're thinking we would do on our property if our site was rezoned for residential uses.
Good question on that. Does that, this rezoning and the satisfying this, your, your need for housing to satisfy the state, does that mean that new water meters that otherwise wouldn't be issued will be issued during the course of these, these new developments?
So, so these projects have to go through the same process every other project does, and so if there's water that they have available to them, either through the water district or, some of these properties are, have, are old enough to maybe have water that was allocated through, when the basin was adjudicated, but they have to have available water, like any other project, to move forward.
So if like, if, for example, a golf course was surviving 90% on reclaimed water, and that same property wants to put 1,200 homes on it, there's no water meters for those 1,200 homes as pre-existing. There's, there's some water basin access they can have, but it's now being utilized by local farmers.
Well, they have water. They have water that serves their facility, right? So they have a meter that serves their restaurant and their facility.
Right.
And then it, so they have a meter.
Oh yeah, but that's one of 1,200.
But they have to go through the Galita Water District to, to apply, just like any other applicant.
Okay, but they won't get special dispensation because of this?
They do not.
Hmm, makes it difficult. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Is this as anticipation of the next arena cycle, or is this the wrapping up of the existing?
That's the wrapping up of the existing, Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, there's a bunch of important projects.
Yeah, there will, you know, we've been working with the districts, and one of the programs in the housing element is to prioritize affordable housing. So affordable housing hopefully will have the priority over market rate housing for water.
So if someone, if some project has 15, 20% under what you're designated.
Affordable.
Portable. Portable. Uh, and that, that isn't really qualified, is it, is?
For the whole project.
If 80% is market share, it doesn't really work, is it?
Yeah, I mean, that's what every project has to do, right? Either through our inclusionary program, or state density bonus, or builder's remedy, whatever it is they're using. So I would say that is not, would not qualify, because they all have to have some percentage. But if 100% affordable project came in.
It'd jump all over.
And they do, and they do.
Oh, okay.
They do, yeah, yeah. The housing authority and people self-help housing, the nonprofits, they, they bring forward. We have a project right now, Hollister Lofts, on Hollister that is 100% affordable.
That's great. Okay.
The, we, we say this isn't impacting Montecito, and I respect what you're saying. My understanding is, is the proposed Miramar and the proposed Biltmore housing elements that we have kind of seen coming forward, that is not in the current RENA process? Is that?
So Commissioner Miller through the chair, they are listed as pending projects. And so they do help us meet the RENA allocation for the low income, but they're not rezoned sites. So you have, so we have several different types of, of properties. We have, we have, there are existing properties that had sufficient zoning. Then we have sites that we have to rezone to increase density to meet our RENA, and then we have pending projects. So all of those, and we have ADUs, so all of that helps us meet our RENA. But they, where there's no rezoning that's happening in Montecito at this stage.
And I could easily take this too far, so I want to take, my understanding was is that the RENA process was the process of rezoning for housing? Is that, is that not a?
That, that, that's only partially correct.
Okay.
So the first thing you do on a housing element is you look at your land inventory and determine whether or not you have land at the right zoning to meet your RENA allocation. If you do not, then you have to rezone property.
Okay, so a RENA process could be successful if we just said the whole Quiama Valley can be quarter acre housing, boom. But then we would never have to worry about it again. But because we're not doing that, we have to like identify where there's shortages?
I, I would not say that that was correct, but because we have numbers split between North and South County, and it's more complicated than that. And you have to be at higher densities to actually get any affordable out of it. So it's, it's, there's more.
Fair enough. I, I, I was inappropriately broad brushing that. Point taken.
So does, employee housing doesn't qualify as necessarily low income housing?
If it is priced as low income housing, it does qualify, yes. So there would be a restriction on that.
Okay. Well, I won't bore you too long for more with this line of questioning, so please continue.
And, and the only other thing I wanted to share is, and I think these are items you haven't, I think you did hear the housing bill item. Did they hear that? Yeah, yeah, that's going to be going to the board on the 6th of February. But we expect this, this workshop with the board and the development community to happen sometime in March. So I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that concludes my report.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can we just, can we take a quick five-minute break?
Yes.
Thanks.
Well, we're back. Deputy Director, you want to continue? Or is that you speaking last? I don't know.
So, Mr. Chair, we can move forward, I think, based on our earlier recommendations, we'll take item number three first. Here, the continuance request, and then we can proceed through the agenda after that.
Okay. Staff?
Morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Katie Knoll. I'm the planner. We're requesting a continuance for this item. Additional information on the project description was provided late last night, and we just need additional time to review the changes and any implications that it may have.
So you may be back next month?
Yes, we are hoping to return February 21st, I believe.
So, Mr. Chair, before we move on, let me just read the item into the record. Just, I'll be quick, sorry. The following is a hearing on the request of Babat LL Appellants to consider the following appeals to appeals. Case number 23 APL, an appeal of the planning and development's decision to approve land use permit, case number 21 LUP 292, and case number 23 APL 33, an appeal of the Montecito Board of Architectural Reviews, preliminary design review approval of case number 22 BAR 187.
Okay. Ready for, um, ready to vote?
Mr. Chair, I think the applicants are here if they want to speak, and we do need to take public comment on just the continuance. We won't be talking about the project or the mayor of the project, only on the continuance request.
Do we have any comments on the continuance?
If the applicant wanted to come forward to say anything, they don't have to.
Okay.
Then we can ask for public comment and then move for a vote.
Okay, please, go ahead, comment.
Uh, so we do have some folks online. If you'd like to speak on the continuance request for item number three, please raise your hand and, or virtual hand, and I will call on you. And I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. All right. David, you want to take a vote for that?
Sure, I think we just need a motion first.
A motion, oh.
Second.
Follows favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, see you next month, hopefully. Shall we move on? Thank you for your presentation, even though it was short.
But at least we got direct.
Okay. All right. So Joe's up next, okay.
The following is a hearing on the request of the 2019 Cleaner Family Trust to consider case number 22 CDH 32, and to determine the project as exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15301 and 15303.
All right. Yes, ex parte, anyone?
Nope. Only part day.
Nope. So when staff's ready, we will hear you out. And when David's ready, okay. Yeah.
Be better.
Yeah. Okay. When you're ready?
Perfect. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Kathleen Volpe, and I will be presenting the proposal for the Clean Air Trust additions project. Here we have a vicinity map of the property. The project is located at tenant 86 Channel Drive in the coastal area of the Montecito Community Plan. The parcel is accessed from Fairway Road via an existing driveway, and it is 0.48 acres. The project is a request for a coastal development permit with hearing to allow for the demolition of a detached garage and 100 square feet of the existing single-family dwelling. And it includes the construction of a new 485 square foot attached garage, an 85 square foot addition to the first floor of the existing single-family dwelling, and construction of a new 2,165 square foot partially underground basement within, within the existing understory. The project also includes a new 32 by 12 pool and approximately 2,010 square feet of new outdoor patio areas. Grading will include 515 cubic yards of cut and fill balanced on site, and no trees are proposed for removal. The parcel is a legally created lot shown as Lot 29 on the Montecito Lanco tract created in 1887. The lot is currently developed with an existing 3,025 square foot single-family dwelling constructed in 1962. A 440 square foot detached garage was added in 1970. The photos show the existing site and conditions. They demonstrate the architectural style and exposed understory of the single-family dwelling. The project was reviewed by the Montecito Board of Architectural Review, and they found that the project design both retains and enhances the character of the iconic structure. Here we look at the parcel site plan. The new attached garage and additions are highlighted in blue. And in this side, it shows the existing elevations of the structures located on the parcel. The east and south elevations demonstrate the open understory. Here we have the proposed elevations of the project. The proposed partially underground basement is outlined in red. The proposed project is consistent with all applicable comprehensive plan policies, including the Montecito Community Plan. Adequate services are currently present to serve the existing development, and availability letters have been issued for the proposed changes. The proposed development is compatible with the surrounding environment and will not impact any visual resources. Mbar has reviewed the project and found it to be consistent with the current architectural style of the existing structure and compatible with the neighborhood. Additionally, a Phase 1/2 Historic Resources Technical Report was prepared for this project. It determined that the residence is built in the international style and has potential historic significance, and it further determined that the proposed changes will not significantly impact the international style or the potential historic nature of the existing structure. Uh, the proposed project is consistent with all applicable Article 2 and E1 Zone Development Standards. The project is residential in nature and compatible with the character of the area, which is consistent with the purpose and intent of the E1 Zone. The proposed development is consistent with height, parking, and setback requirements. The proposed project can be found exempt through SEQA Sections 15301 and 15303, which allows for a minor alteration of existing public and private structures and the construction of small new structures. These exemptions include additions to single-family dwellings, new garages, pool, and hardscape. Staff recommends that your commission make the required findings for approval of the project, determine the project is exempt from SEQA, and grant approval of the project subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Do we have questions? On my left?
But for this being a coastal development permit, is there a reason this would come to the planning commission? I mean, I understand we have automatic review of, of, of CDPs, but kind of, but for that, is there something controversial or, or, or discussed?
Commissioner Miller through the chair, no, you're correct. The, it's because it is in the coastal zone that it comes to you for hearing. Or the appeals jurisdiction.
Is there a CDP required for demolition, or is that just kind of informative to how we are getting to net square footage?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so in the coastal zone, a CDP is required for demolition of, of really any structure. So that i- if the project were to come in with just demolition, and, and because this is located in the appeals jurisdiction, a CDH would be required. Now, there, there are options to waive CDHs, waive a hearing for a CDH, so then that would make the decision, the director's decision. And in that case, a demolition, we might waive the hearing, but otherwise, it would, it would, um, within the Montecito community planning area, it would go to the Montecito Planning Commission. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Miller?
It does. And then I, I guess my final question is, is that you were charac, and this may have just been, you had suggested that in 1970, the garage that was built was about 400 square feet? So is this a partial demolition of the garage, the 100 square feet? Or is it, did I misunderstand your characterization of the size as built in 1970?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the detached garage was totally demolished, so 440 square feet of the garage was demolished. And then in addition to that, 100 square feet of the existing single-family dwelling. So that's, so there are two things that were done. There was a partial, a small, small demolition of the existing SFD. Oh, I'm sorry, and then the demolition of the, um, yeah, and then the demolition of the existing detached garage. This is.
So I, I, I'm kind of a simple guy who, who, things kind of boiled down in a simple way. If I was, I appreciate there's a lot of square footage that's being added on a two-story level. But looking at it from a bird's eye view, is the net square footage of the lot in, being, under, under roof being increased or, or not? Does that make sense as a question? But what I mean is, is that like, I, I understand the house is getting bigger, but most of it is underneath. Between what is being demolished with the freestanding garage and the existing dwelling versus what is being added as net new square footage in a two-dimensional plane, do we have a net increase in square footage, or is it net neutral? It may be a dumb question, but I, I, I need, I require simple understandings.
The blue area kind of tells you the added surface area.
But is that net more?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I, I understand your question, so I'll, I think, I think we'll, we'll let Kathleen confirm for sure, since she knows the, the specific details of the project. So there is an existing garage that's being demolished, and then it is being replaced with, I believe, a slightly larger garage. And then there's, there's a small 100 square foot, actually. Um, and then there's, there's a small 100-square-foot, um, actually, Kathleen, can you bring up the, the, um, project description slide that has the square footages on it? So essentially, the, the net change in square footage is roughly, it's de minimis. Um, so you can see that there's a, there's a, um, new attached 485-square-foot garage. Um, there is demolition of 100 square feet, and there's an addition of 85 square feet of first-floor additions, so, so there's actually going down in square footage from that.
So the 1970 demolished garage is the same size as the new attached garage?
We, we are confirming that information right now, and if, if the applicant has that information readily handy, we can... It's the same size? Okay, so it's slightly bigger. So, so essentially, the, the overall footprint of development on-site from, from a bird's eye view will not be changing, the square footage.
That, that was, my summen, that's what I was trying to get at. Thank you so much.
So, um, the structural significance of the addition of the basement is not much because there's existing piles that are, that are there. There's not much change. Is that correct? Okay. He's shaking his head.
Mr. Chair, that, that's correct.
Well, that's kind of cool. I like, I like that change. Okay. I don't have any other questions, actually. Anybody else?
Ready to make?
Okay, go for it.
I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the...
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I don't think we've heard from the applicant. I don't know if the applicant has a presentation or not.
The architect want to say something here?
And then we do need to ask for public comment. Which I think we heard.
Almost jumped the gun here.
No, this is great. Blazingly fast for our first hearing.
Proceed.
Commissioners, uh, my name is Carl Cross. I'm the, uh, architect and, um, director of Studio William Hefner. And on behalf of the owner and Studio William Hefner, I would like to thank you for this opportunity, for this presentation. Um, Kathleen was correct in saying that the existing house has a slightly skewed detached garage that was built in 1970 that we'll remove, and the proposal is for the, uh, new, um, attached garage. Uh, David, is there a way to bring up the slides?
I have a question while, while we're waiting.
Sure.
Is, is the entrance, the gate entrance gonna expand at all, or is it gonna remain the same?
No, it will remain the same. We will move it north away from the corner of Fairway and Channel Drive to allow a little bit more visibility. And, uh, just through agency review, Public Works is requiring a minor setback, uh, on the gate because it's right on the street and it's kind of cumbersome for...
Yes, I noticed that yesterday myself.
Yeah, the, the owners to come in, so we will be, um, kind of moving that to the, to the north a little bit away from that.
Okay, so here we go.
So here we go. So, uh, next slide, please. So, uh, Kathleen did a good job of kind of orientating. You could see that existing garage there is slightly askew and detached from, um, that will be the only part that will be removed from the house. Next slide, please. Uh, just some of the existing photographs that we've already seen. Next slide, please. Uh, this photograph in the middle there on the left showing the view from Butterfly, uh, the corner of Butterfly there and Channel Drive, um, looking at that kind of iconic structure. Uh, one of the goals of the project is to really maintain that view, so all those elements will still be in place, and the proposed addition of square footage will be underneath that story, kind of out of view from kind of the public realm. Oh, another thing on the right, uh, showing the existing neighbor there, where I'm on the balcony taking a shot of the existing neighbors right there. So we've engaged with them, and we're talking through, um, their concerns of privacy and, um, stormwater management. But when they built their house, it was more of a reaction to, um, the existing house there, so, um, their facade is pretty blank, um, really kind of focusing their, um, privacy on the other side of the house. Next slide, please.
Is that house on the north side?
That house is on the east side of that.
East side, because the north side was the same owner, I heard.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's located on the bottom slide there. That's kind of out of the way.
Okay.
Yes, correct. Next slide, please. This is a floor area ratio, um, diagram just showing the existing neighborhood. Uh, the neighbors are up about 200, and we're proposing one at about 150, which really kind of, um, MBAR allowed us to do because we're taking that existing, or the new square footage underneath the existing. Next slide, please. Again, the existing, uh, next slide, please. This just shows a floor plan of, uh, a very simple, um, uh, floor plan in the, uh, existing, uh, three bedrooms, and then you can see the understory of, uh, existing, uh, piles and, um, columns. Next slide, please. So looking at that, uh, top elevation, the eastern elevation, showing the, uh, existing understory that we're taking advantage of. And that's a good section, um, on the bottom, kind of looking at the Fairway Road to the left, going through the driveway. It's approachable on the west, um, meeting grade, so it really kind of is that one-story example. And then as the slide slopes drastically from west to east, we're kind of taking advantage of that understory. Next slide, please. So this is the proposed, removing the entry to the north to be further away and safer with that, uh, intersection, um, slightly recessing that, and, um, adding a new garage that's attached to allow a little bit more room, uh, in the motor court, and the other addition is the, for the stairwell going down, uh, below. And then the other, uh, slight addition, um, on the south side is for, um, expansion of a kitchen and a pool bath. And then you see the patio and, uh, the new pool. Next slide, please. More site sections kind of demonstrating, taking advantage of that, um, uh, void underneath the existing house. Next slide, please. This is just agency review. We've engaged the fire department, Public Works, um, water department, sanitary district, and all have given their preliminary approval so far. This is the proposed structure, uh, floor plan, kind of engaging, um, the exterior spaces more instead of a balcony, six-foot balcony that kind of wraps. So we're going to be engaging, um, the land and the pool and expanding that, making that connection of the interior and exterior spaces, and bringing the program up to the owner's lifestyle and current, enough to date. It hasn't really been touched since 62, so it needs some love. Um, and then the basement there, or that partial underground basement, is more of kind of a lounge and, and, and bedrooms, but that still maintains a really great view down the coast. Next slide, please. Here's some exterior elevations. I think one of the goals and concerns that we had is just to, again, um, adding to an existing structure, using all the same materiality and period tile pieces as well. Next slide. And just some sections that kind of demonstrate, um, uh, how it relates to the site. Next, please. Um, just some landscaping, preliminary landscaping, using, um, permeable paving for the motor court, um, and some of the other paving around the pool. Um, landscape will be minimal, um, and really keeping in tune with, um, that kind of mid-century vibe. And that should do it. Thank you very much.
I got a question for you. Um, I know there's not a lot of room up there for anything except maybe the, the resident's home and occasional parties, but during construction, where is, where is contractors gonna park?
Um, hopefully in the motor court.
Really?
Yes.
So the neighbors, they, I guess it's up to them to make their objections if it's too many cars on the road?
Yes.
Because it's, um, accessible to beach traffic as well on the east side.
Correct.
So it's pretty tight.
It's very tight.
I guess you're quite aware of that.
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you. Um, anybody else have questions?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would like to also just, uh, clarify that, uh, the conditions of approval do, do include a, a condition that requires onsite construction vehicle parking. So if there were vehicles that were parked in the neighborhood for construction purposes, and, and we got complaints, we, that would be something that we would enforce.
So you're offsetting the, the pace of construction in order to protect the traffic parking areas? Because it's gonna take a little more time with fewer vehicles working on the site.
Uh, potentially, or, or they would need to have a park, yeah, bus in, or, or have an alternative way to get, to get workers to the, to the site.
Okay, um, anything else? So we go to, I guess, well, here with the public comment, David?
So for those at home, if you want to, would like to speak on this item, go ahead and raise your, raise your virtual hand, and I'll call on you, as I have not received any physical speaker slips for this item.
Okay.
And not seeing any hands raised.
All right. Well, good report, but no further ado, do we have a motion?
I make the motion that we approve staff recommendations.
And that number is, you read that?
Just so for the record, that's, uh, Mr. Kupiec, uh, made a motion just because his mic wasn't on.
Yes, I make the motion to accept staff recommendations and approve the project.
So that was for item number one on the agenda, 22, 22 CDH 32.
Okay, do we have a second?
You do. I second that.
Okay.
Would you like me to do roll call? Okay, great.
Be official.
Commissioner Kupiec.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Chair Puleche.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Yeah. Okay, so our final topic today, we're gonna move on to change, do we need a break or anything? You all right, uh? You okay? Okay, we'll, we'll wait. All right, small break. I know. Okay, shall we proceed with our, or continue, I should say?
Yeah, it's all, just very quickly, we the item into the record. The following is a hearing on the request of property owners Paul and Renee Haas to consider case number 23 RMM1, and to determine the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15305.
So one question, are we still in coastal commission here, coastal area, or why is this here? Okay. Thank you. Okay, ex parte, yes? Um, do you? No, I visited the site, but other than that?
Briefly chatted with the owner.
Go ahead, you may proceed. Thank you. Hey, can you tell? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so staff, would you like to present?
Ready? Uh, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Henry Wakamea, and today I'm presenting the Haas Family Trust Recorded Map Modification. The project is located at 1950 Lemon Ranch Road in the Montecito Community Plan area and is zoned one-family residential. The subject parcel was created in 1986 as Lot 3 of tract map, uh, 13,729, and contains no structural development. The proposed project is for a recorded map modification to the tract map to expand the existing building envelope. A recorded map modification is the permitting process required for modification of building envelope boundaries. The project will modify the original tract map to expand the existing bu building envelope from 9,143 square feet, as shown on the left, to 11,508 square feet, as shown on the right. On the right, you can see the proposed building envelope in red with the existing envelope shown by the dashed green line. The applicant has requested this recorded map modification to expand the existing building envelope to increase the buildable area of the lot for future residential use. Approval of the original tract map that established the existing building envelope did not specify the reasons for its current configuration, but it appears to have been created to avoid existing onsite easements, trees, and the... but it appears to have been created to avoid existing onsite easements, trees, and the Arroyo Perita Fault. The proposed building envelope will continue to avoid trees or remain over 100 feet from the Arroyo Perita Fault. And agreements are in place with the Montecito Sanitary District for easement relocation. No changes are proposed to the property lines. The proposed project is consistent with all applicable comprehensive plan policies, including the Montecito Community Plan, compliant with all applicable standards in the Montecito Land Use and Development Code, including setback regulations, and is consistent with the provisions of the Chapter 21 subdivision regulations. While no development is proposed as part of this recorded map modification, future residential development will be required to obtain a land use permit and Board of Architectural Review. Future residential development is subject to all applicable Montecito Land Use and Development Code requirements such as setbacks, height, and parking. Additionally, future residential development is required to be consistent with all applicable comprehensive plan policies, including the Montecito Community Plan. The proposed project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA guideline section 15305, which exempts minor alterations in land use limitations in areas with an average slope of less than 20% that do not result in any changes in land use or density. The subject parcel is gently sloping with an average of 3% and the proposed expansion of the building envelope will not result in any changes to the allowed land use or density. In summary, the project consists of the expansion of the existing building envelope on a residentially zoned property and meets all applicable requirements for a recorded map modification. No changes are proposed to the existing property boundaries and no development is proposed under this permit. Staff recommends that commission makes the required findings for approval of the project, determine the project is exempt from CEQA, and approve the project. Thank you for your time and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
So can I understand that the Burnham Woods Association's also had a chance to look at this and approve it? Maybe I asked the applicant for that.
I believe so, but you can ask the agent Ginger Anderson.
And just one more question for you. So again, the reason why it's in front of us is because...
Chair and members of the commission, any, the Chapter 21 subdivision regulations require that changes to a map go before the Montecito Planning Commission or the County Planning Commission.
What is this chapter? Can you inform me what that rule is?
Chair and Commissioners, Chapter 21 is the regu- subdivision regulations, which are the regulations that cover maps and lot line adjustments, the creation of new lots, and the changes, changes to development envelopes in this case. So a recorded map modification, it's basically the mechanism whereby you can make minor changes to an already approved map or to the conditions of the map.
Okay, and, yes, go ahead.
Just so that I understand the process of how all this works, how does the development footprint get defined? Who defines it? I mean, there are setback requirements. I noticed on this, there's an easement change for utilities, which makes sense, but, I mean, those odd shapes. How does that, how does that red line get developed? Who determines that?
Chair and members of the commission, it, it's kind of on a case-by-case basis for each map. The types of things that define the boundaries of a development envelope are things like setbacks, as you've mentioned, and then site constraints such as easements, steep slopes, trees.
So that red line was created by a process that was county-driven?
Correct, that already occurred and already established it. And, but, you know, just in general, they could be created on different maps for all sorts of different reasons.
Do I understand this is the last empty lot that's on the track?
Chair and Commissioners.
Trick question?
Uh, no, there's several empty lots to the south of this one that are currently used by the Burnham Wood Golf Course. But to the east and west, all of the properties are already developed for residential use.
But that's the driving range or whatever that is over there.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Any questions over here to the left? Nope. We wait to our applicant. We may have more questions, but thank you for your report. Nice job. Okay.
Good morning Chair Poliche and members of the commission. I wanted to, my, my name is Ginger Anderson with Brownstein. I'm the agent for the property owners Paul and Renee Haas. Wanted to thank staff and you all for your time and consideration of this matter this morning. We have reviewed the materials, the staff report, and conditions and have no objections to them as written. As Mr. Wakamea presented the project before you, it was a straightforward reconfiguration of a building envelope on a one-acre lot, which was created by the prior map. This was the phase of the Burnham Wood development and this phase was recorded in 1980, in the 80s. So by then, a lot of the rest of the development had been done. To your point, Ron, yes, I believe all of the other properties in Burnham, most, most if not all have been developed, except for the ones being used by the golf course and the driving range. When I look at an aerial photograph, it appears to be that way. And it might be because this is a little bit more challenging of a site with the sewer line running through the middle of it. So the Haases have decided to take that on and move it over and adjust to the record map building envelope. There is a slide in Mr. Wakamea's presentation that says no development is proposed at this time. That is correct, no development is part of the record map modification before you. There is development proposed and the envelope is kind of accommodating that, or is accommodating that. The Haases and their architects, Danny Longwell and John Kucharsky, have been working with the Haases since they obtained the property, developing a really nice site plan. They have their Montecito points, which they received in early 2022. They've also been working with, we've all been working with the Montecito Sanitary District for relocation of their sewer mainline. It's currently in plan check with them as well. The house has received concept approval from MBAR and has received concept and preliminary approval from Burnham Wood. The, interesting to note, the existing development envelope does not match up with the requirements of the setbacks in the Burnham Wood building guidelines. So the setback right now is about 10 feet. The proposal to, will actually adjust it so that the envelope matches up with their 15-foot property line setback. So it's actually a pretty well-considered adjustment of this.
And they were, it was approved by the, the Board of?
With Burnham and with the MBAR, yeah.
Okay.
And the sewer, the sewer modification has been approved?
We are in plan check, but yes, the concept of moving it, the location where it's going to be moved. Right now, we're just working through a couple of tweaks to the landscape material that they'll allow in their easement, but we've been working with them for a very long time and the indication is that, that will, yes, we're moving the sewer.
So is, are one of the conditions of approval, that that easement be approved?
Yes, the special condition one requires the new easement and the quitclaim prior to recordation of the map.
Does it need to be installed and changed before you can get your map approved or?
In this case, yes, because of the way that the sanitary district's process lines up with the ability to establish the new easement and quitclaim the old.
Okay, sounds all right to me. Thank you. Anyone else back here want to speak?
Crowd.
Okay, thank you. All right, David.
I just asked for public comment. If anyone present would like to speak on this item, raise your hand and I'll call on you. No hands raised.
Okay, so, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept staff recommendations and approve the project.
And you want to, I want to second that motion. Okay, you want to name the?
Read it in?
Read it in. Project number? Bottom three, I think it is.
23 RMM.
Yeah, 23, we will, we will accept staff recommendations and approve the project, 23 RMM dash 0001, subject to the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Commissioner Kupiec?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Chair Poliche?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other business, Deputy Director?
Mr. Chair, that concludes our business today.
Okay, thank you for all for coming. One second. Hold it, one last one.
I'd like to make a motion to request that County Flood Control attend our next meeting.
Okay.
Are we in the process?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just, hold, if I can finish, sorry. Don't make me rude. So during this hearing, I have been coordinating with Flood Control and they are planning on attending February 21st. I, I don't think a motion is necessary at this point.
Okay, so you've, you've explained what we're looking for?
So they know that the information about the new LIDAR information will be part of their presentation?
They will be committed to attending. That's all I can say right now.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Bye-bye.
Good job, staff. We're done.